Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First up, we have a public hearing for the Legislative Committee.
Roll call vote.
Roll call first. Okay, let's do a roll call first.
What did I do?
Déjà vu.
Okay, Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite is absent. Councilman Brian Lox?
Councilman Brian Lox, Council Large present.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan?
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan first.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton?
Councilwoman Ruby Melton, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali?
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali, Third District, present.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Councilman Gary Donovan, Fourth District, present.
Councilman Edward McMillan?
Councilman Edward McMillan, Fifth District, present.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan is absent. Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker, Seventh District, present.
Councilman Christopher Vargo?
Councilman Christopher Vargo, Eighth District, present.
Councilwoman Katie Muller?
Councilwoman Katie Muller, Ninth District, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, Tenth District, present.
And Chairman Nicholas Pascal?
Chairman Nicholas Pascal, present.
And we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
We have a quorum, thank you. All right, we have two public hearings tonight, both in Legislative Matters Committee, so I will give it over to Councilman Vargo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is 7:04, and we will commence the public hearing for the Legislative Matters Committee on Communication D from the September 22, 2025 Agenda, from Michael Gormaney, Director of Finance, regarding an ordinance amendment updating Chapter 42, Section 6, competitive bidding of the City of West Haven ordinance to be in conformity with the State of Connecticut general statute, Section 7-148, Vision Victor, requirements for competitive bidding. Would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on this matter? For a second time, would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on this matter? For a third and final time, would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, public hearing is closed at 7:05. Move on to the public hearing. Time is still 7:05. Under the Legislative Matters Committee for Communication I from the July 28, 2025 Agenda, from Mayor Dorinda Boer regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the Code of the City of West Haven Fair Rent Commission. Would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on this matter? For a second time, would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on this matter? For a third and final time, would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. The time is still 7:05, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. First order of business tonight, we have a proclamation of Diwali, the festival of life, I'm sorry, lights. So Diwali is the Hindu festival of lights, a multi-day celebration of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. It begins on October 20th this year. It is celebrated by millions of people in the Hindu, Sikh, and Jain faiths. The festival often spans five days, with each day having unique rituals and cultural significance, culminating in a celebration of light, prosperity, and unity. Celebrations include festive gatherings, prayer, feasts, fireworks, wearing of new clothes, and exchanging of gifts. The state is recognizing this holiday with a new law that went into effect this October, becoming the second state in the U.S. to recognize Diwali as an official holiday. And tonight, we have with us Rajiv Pahuja, who spearheaded the push for recognition of Diwali. And I'd like Raj to come up now and say a little something.
So I'm Rajiv Pahuja. Again, as Nick was saying, Mr. Pascal, he was saying that I spearheaded the initiative for Diwali. I actually had started this in the state of Connecticut. I felt it was time for us to have this. I started this in 2024. I started seeing our Indian-American population growing to about 40,000 residents in the state of Connecticut. So we've grown from 5,000 in the '70s to all the way to 40,000 in 2025. You said it really well when you talked about Diwali. I'm impressed, how many people know it now. So Diwali is like a wonderful, beautiful, and happy holiday to cook off this festive season on October 20th. So I want to thank Bill Heffernan, who was actually on the bill too, who actually, who Nick helped me get, you know, three people on the bill, was MJ Shannon, Bill Heffernan, and we had Gary Winfield, who actually supported the bill. So, basically, I want to talk about, you know, what the community celebrates in this. The lighting of the dya, I don't know if anybody has seen it. It's actually the chance to remember the midst of darkness. That light will prevail. Knowledge will defeat ignorance, and compassion will triumph over despair. Diwali is a reminder that we must do our part to achieve victory by dedicating ourselves to service others. But we affirm our commitment to one another and strive to lift each other up, and together we will continue moving closer to a brighter future. So everybody's asking what the driving force of me in regard to Diwali was. Well, like many other community leaders that we saw in New York, and Pennsylvania, and California, which just passed a law last week, last Tuesday, which made this a public holiday. I was about celebrating a holiday about building bridges between different cultures and ensuring that the state of Connecticut's public recognition reflect the growing diversity, inclusion, and equity of our state. Everyone in the state of Connecticut will want to celebrate Diwali, and it should be recognized similar to Thanksgiving and Christmas, being an American holiday. But I think we're getting to that point now. The initiative should focus on visibility and educating the public and about what Diwali's significance is, helping both Indian-American and broader communities appreciate the cultural aspects of the holiday. This includes teaching about the history of Diwali, the themes of light overcoming darkness, good over evil, and the triumph over knowledge, as I explained. By having dialogues and fostering cultural awareness, a more inclusive environment for everyone is created of all backgrounds to understand and appreciate the value that Diwali represents in the city of West Haven. So we want to start doing that, because we've started seeing a growing number of population here in the city of West Haven. I've seen that. So, like I said, you know, West Haven, the city of West Haven is a great city. And Connecticut is a diverse state as well, stretched by the 3.7 million residents, eight counties. Diwali, the law designates the 15th day of Karthik in the Hindu lunar celebration calendar as the observance date for Diwali in October or November. So everyone in the city of West Haven, I always say, in the state of Connecticut, should be proud of this historic moment of Diwali being recognized. Making Diwali a state holiday ensures our future generation of Indian-Americans, let's say, that come to the city of West Haven, that want to move here. And we've seen it here at University of New Haven. We've had a lot of Indian-Americans come there, and we have a huge Indian population, even in Notre Dame, West Haven. We've seen that. I had someone who came in, who I did business with. Their son went to Notre Dame, West Haven. So we're seeing that, and that's great. And I will say congratulations to the city of West Haven and the state of Connecticut on this huge and exciting milestone of Diwali getting recognized under Public Act 25-59. Thank you.
Thank you. Raj, stay there. We're gonna actually have the mayor read the proclamation, which is up on the podium right now.
I know you said "thank you" to us, but thank you to you. Thank you to you. Thank you to you for all you've done in bringing attention and awareness and driving this initiative and making this happen. And I'm standing here, as you mentioned, with our state representative, who helped to bring this, drive this home for us, and Gary Winfield, and of course MJ Shannon, who I know worked well with you. So this is a proclamation on behalf of the city of West Haven. The proclamation that Diwali, the festival of lights, is a significant cultural and religious holiday celebrated by Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists in the city of West Haven, Connecticut, and around the world, and whereas Diwali symbolizes the triumph of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. And whereas celebrants of Diwali light dya lamps, light dya lamps, share sweets and gather with family and friends to recognize the beginning of a new year, creating a spirit of renewal and unity within our community. And whereas West Haven takes great pride in its diverse community with residents from many backgrounds enriching our cultural landscape. And whereas the state of Connecticut, following the enactment of Public Act 25-59 by Governor Ned Lamont, has officially recognized Diwali as a state holiday effective October 1, 2025, further validating the heritage and contributions of our residents who celebrate this festival. And whereas the observance of Diwali in West Haven honors the contributions of our city's Indian-American and South Asian communities to our civic life and cultural vibrancy. Now therefore I, Dorinda Boer, Mayor of the city of West Haven, Connecticut, do hereby officially recognize the observance of Diwali and encourage all residents to embrace the values of compassion, hope, and cultural understanding that the festival of light represents. Thank you. Want to say "you're worth it"? Want to say "you're worth it"? Okay. Our state legislature is working with you.
Hello. I'm State Representative Bill Heffernan, as you all know. It was my pleasure to help you with this, help you on your journey, I guess, to get this Diwali recognized, the festival of lights. I think it's very important for the community, for the Indian-American community, but West Haven in general. Things like this are great. They bring people together, you know, of all cultures. And I think that it's about time we had this festival of lights recognized for the 20th. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you for being here. This must be very special for you.
Yeah.
Do you mind if we just take a quick? Okay, sure.
Raj. Raj. And, Mr. Pahuja?
Yes.
I just want to thank you. I admire your fight. You know, when I met you, you enlisted me right away, and I'm glad to do my small little part to help you, and this council fully backs this. So thank you very much. All right? Absolutely. All right, moving on tonight, I just want to do a quick moment of silence. This moment of silence is for Margaret Krasminsky, who was a lifelong Allentown resident. And she served her community as a commissioner for the Allentown Fire District. And she was a frequent visitor to us here at the City Council. And I gotta say, despite any struggles she was facing, she always came here to let us know what was on her mind, to the delight of some and to the chagrin of others. However, she always had our ear, and more importantly, our respect. So please join me in a moment of silence for Margaret Krasminsky. Thank you. One other note, I would like to wish a very quick and uneventful recovery to Ricky Spire, who had a significant surgery recently. Our thoughts are with him and his family, and our hope is that we didn't play any part in the cause of his ailment. So get well soon, Ricky. We will now enter into a public session. The time is 7:18. Would anyone like to speak before the City Council? For the second time, would anyone like to speak before the City Council?
My name's Rich Hebert. I live at 166 Bloom Street. I think that this was great to be here tonight. That was a pretty significant and enlightening presentation that we just had. The reason I wanted to stand up tonight was to thank the mayor and the City Council for our adventures with Grindr, the new ball field that's going in. It was really stupendous, and it's a, you know, it's a much expected improvement to that field, because that was once the wonder of West Haven, and now it's coming back. And I really appreciate what you've done with it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hebert. Sure?
My name is Jay Rivera. I'm 16, Boss Road. So I'm, I'm, I'm nervous as hell. Excuse me. I'm the founder of CT Beds. And I tried to reach out to a couple of you guys. I think I spoke to you. The only one apparently that even knows is her. We take people who are pretty much forgotten, and we help them with beds, CT beds, apparently. Basically, people that are running out of domestic violence situations, eight-year-old little girls who want to kill themselves, and all of a sudden, because they got a bed, they don't want to do that anymore. Veterans who are sleeping on a couch, dads who are just trying to be dads, and they can't decide to have their kids sleeping on the floor or feeding them. So we get involved. Today is our six-month anniversary of being an actual 501. So it's kind of like, perfect. But by the end of this week, it's gonna mark 50 families that we actually helped out, faster than any organization ever, doing something that literally nobody else is doing whatsoever. Yeah, you got your furniture banks, but they're always either tied up, or they don't call you back. I see that as a problem. Channel 12 heard about us. They did a whole special, and it was beautiful. Senator, I'm gonna chop his name out, Blooming, Bloomingthaw, Blooming Hall? Yeah, there you go. Usually my wife helps me out with that one. He was on the news talking about us, saying how vital we are to the community and how unique it is. And it's great and all. It's amazing to be honored in that way. But the problem is that you guys have no idea that we're here. Zero. But we already helped out DCF, Columbus House, like we're in the entire state of Connecticut we're helping, not just one family here, one family there, because this is an actual thing that's called bedlessness. Nobody's ever heard of it, except very few. So if you could just keep your eye out for CT Beds somehow, I know I'm trying to get in contact with you. I would greatly appreciate if you would turn my call or something. But this is all coming out of my pocket. I don't know if you could tell, but I'm extremely dusty, because I just walked out of my woodshop. I do this 24 hours a day, seven days a week, except for church and the other stuff that I do, which is community service and stuff like that. But we need help. We need, I need some type of help, whether it's, this is how you ask for funds, or this is how you do fundraising, anything. Because I personally cannot do this by myself. When I'm getting emails upon, I put my phone on mute for a reason. I'm getting countless emails and countless emails from people, normal people. They don't have a microphone. They don't have a TV camera. They can't voice their opinion like that, and honestly, a lot of them don't want to, because they have something called pride. And we're here to fix that. We're here to bring them back up. We're here to literally give them their dignity back, because they deserve it. But the people who find out about us, they love us. They're like, wow, you're amazing. Thank you. But I don't want people to know me. I want people to know CT Beds. And I need West Haven as, since I moved here, almost five years ago. It's been amazing. I love West Haven. But I just have a problem that you guys don't know who we are. And I don't need to be a superstar. I don't need to be on camera. I don't want to be on camera. I don't even want to be in front of this microphone. But I know that this is the only way you guys actually know who we are. And I'm not an emotional guy, but I'm ready to freaking cry, because I really believe in this. And I know every time I ran into somebody, they hear what it is, and they're like, dude, we love you. Like, let's get the voices out. But nobody responds. And I think that's a problem. I know the mayor remembers, "I stopped you at your car. I'm so sorry." But I'm opportunist, and I'm a realistic person. If I see opportunity, I'm gonna jump at it, because I believe in what I do. Helping 50 families in six months? Can anybody name an organization that's doing that? No? So please, you know, reach out, ctbeds.org. We help veterans, children, men, women. I don't care about your background. Just reach out, and please, we need help. That's all.
So, Mr. Rivera, is that the best way to get ahold of you? Can you say it one more time for the people listening?
Ctbeds.org. Get ready. Ctbeds.org. I actually purchased a phone with a private number that's open to everybody, And also you can do the email thing, ctbedshelp@gmail.com. You call that number, I will pick up. You email that email, I will answer you, or my wife will answer you. But we help the entire state. So it's not like it's just your district, or it's just, it's everybody.
Right.
And I know West Haven is powerful. Like, you guys love. And that's what we're trying to teach everybody, is they can, they can feel that love, because they deserve it. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Chairman?
Yes?
The last four digits, I was writing down your organization down, the last four digits of your phone, 2999? Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. You got a card.
Absolutely.
Cards?
I got cards, flyers.
Sure.
Cards.
Cards would be great.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
So give away yours.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Sorry, but if there's dust on it, I'm so sorry.
Thank you again. Would anyone else like to speak before the City Council for a second?
Bonnie Poseck, 107 East Avenue. I'm here to ask again about the revenue from the beach parking lots this past summer. I'm curious about the amount that we brought in, and particularly the lot over by Reva. I read in the Register about the car registration revenues, and I think that's great. But I also do think that the lot by Reva, we need to be charging for. And strangely enough, after I spoke at our last meeting, I got a message on Facebook from someone I have never spoken to before, letting me know that this was a non-pay lot, that there was an agreement made, and that no cameras would be installed. And I was surprised to hear that, because that was not anything that we had discussed here in City Council. And I wondered if that was a unilateral decision without council input, and I was curious about that. Also, I'm curious about the, whatever it is that's going on with Grind at Morse Park. And I do think that's great, that something's happening there. It's a lot less littered there now, and that's good. But I'm curious about what we're doing for them and what they're doing for us. And I haven't seen anything that was any comprehensive explanation of that. And then finally, I just wanted to say, because Mellie Garthwaite isn't here this evening, and her husband is ill, that we had Westie Palooza, the first annual Westie Palooza on October 4 in Old Grove Park. It was very popular. There were a lot of people there. I think it helped that there was also the Fire Safety Expo at the same time, so people came and they enjoyed both. But Margaret Longo from the Parks Department, and as I said, Councilwoman Garthwaite, and Chris Petrucci, and Roberta Garlock, and myself, worked very hard to make that happen. And we raised somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,000 for the animal shelter. And we want to continue to do that, but we would very much appreciate the city's support by way of insurance coverage, because we did have to pay for insurance coverage for that, and that was a big bite. So I appreciate your listening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll see if we can get those answers for you. Would anyone else like to speak before the City Council for the second time? Would anyone like to speak before the City Council? And for the third and final time, would anyone like to speak before the City Council? Public session is now closed. We will now convene the 10:14:25 regularly scheduled City Council meeting at 7:30. I am looking for a motion to amend the, to suspend the rules and amend the agenda to add another communication onto the agenda for this evening, which we will call Communication H if it passes. And this motion will be a, I'm sorry, this communication will be a communication from the mayor that hereby approves the waiver of all permitting fees for the Halloween on the Green event for 2025. And we will be placing that in the Finance Committee.
Motion.
Second.
All right, perfect. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. I'm very discombobulated tonight. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Journal of September 22, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Since we didn't have mics on, Mackie made the motion first, and Tucker second it, or Vargo? I'll say both. I'll, okay, Vargo. Sorry about that.
I'll be abstaining on that, because I wasn't here.
Okay, so we have Pascal and Johnstone abstaining.
I'm not forgetting anything now. Perfect.
Okay.
And when she's ready, I will have the council clerk hand out the communications for this evening.
Okay, we have Communication A from the tax collector regarding overpayment of refunds for September 2025, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. Communication B from Mayor Dorinda Boer regarding an amendment to Chapter 206, Streets and Sidewalks, adopting Article Eight Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices being assigned to the Legislative Matters, Chairman Vargo. Communication C from Michael Gormany, Director of Finance regarding WPCA approval of fiscal year 2024-2025 pre-audit transfer, transferring $902,215 amount not to exceed $990,000 from the water, uh, from the WPCA Sewer Fund to the City General Fund, being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication D from Michael Gormany, Director of Finance regarding approval of fiscal year 2024-2025 pre-audit transfers for General Fund, transferring funds between various light items, being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication E from Michael Gormany, Director of Finance regarding approval of fiscal year 2024-2025 budget revision to increase the Allington Fire Department budget from $9,5,367 to $9,273,596 or final closeout figure, and to make an additional expenditure appropriation to the Allington Fire Department pension in the amount of $231,569 or final closeout figure, being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication F from Michael Gormany, Director of Finance requesting city council approval to create a new capital project titled Communications and Technology Upgrades in the amount of $253,001 for the Malloy site, where funding is available by reclassifying and transferring previously approved and bonded projects for the police phone system upgrade, $100,000, and police technology balance of $153,001 being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication G from Paul Dorsey Corporation Council regarding resolutions authorizing the Board of Education to apply for a grant for the roof replacement project at Savin Rock Community School, appointing members to the Savin Rock Community School Roof Project Committee, and appointing the Savin Rock Community School Roof Project Committee to such project, and appropriation of funds for preliminary drawings and outline, and outline preparations for the project, being assigned to council as a whole, Chairman Pascal. And the newly added Communication H from Mayor Dorinda Borr waiving all permit fees for the Halloween on the Green event for 2025. And that concludes our communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So first up in council as a whole, we have a communication regarding resolutions authorizing the Board of Education to apply for a grant for the roof replacement project at Savin Rock Community School, appointing members to the Savin Rock Community School Roof Project Committee, appointing the Savin Rock Community School Roof Project Committee to such project, and the appropriation of funds for preliminary drawings and outline preparations for the project. Can I have Ken Carney come up at this time? So I anticipate a few questions on this, so can you just start from the beginning and just walk us through the process and what we, what we're, thank you.
Okay, so with any school project that's reimbursed, the state of Connecticut requires that these motions be made by the council. In this case, we're looking at just under a 78% reimbursement. The Board of Ed also has to make a motion, they made their motion on October 4th. If you look at the packet that I just handed out, we have presently bonded $550,000 for our share of this project. If you go to page one, you will see the requirements from the state on Form SCG 1045, this is the form we used for state reimbursement, and it outlines the three motions. Now, what's a little confusing is the chicken and egg thing here. The state says we have to have schematic design to apply, and that means hiring an architect. We've already hired the architect, he already did the plans, okay? The state wants a motion from the council allowing that architect to be hired to go in with the application. So it's out of order, but it's appropriate, all right? If you go to page two, you will see the contract signed by the mayor back in May for the architect who performed the schematic design, construction drawings, and his total fee is 49.8, we managed to negotiate him down $7,200. If you go to page five, this is the budget for this project. 3.1 million, but if you notice, under owner's soft costs, he's got 413,000. The state expects that you're gonna hire a OPM, owner's rep, we're not gonna hire an owner's rep. So very little of that money will be spent, all right? If you go to page six, you'll see the asbestos testing that was done. That's imperative because that changes the price dramatically, and no asbestos was detected. And if you go to page 10, you will see the actual application to the state of Connecticut, which is waiting on your motions to submit.
Okay, so, let me just, I, I'm gonna open it up to questions from the, the city council because I know we, uh, we originally had a few. Who would like to, anybody would like to ask any questions on this? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Ken, um, could you go down memory lane for a second because it's, it's been a couple of years here? Was this, or was this not originally part of the ARPA scope when everything started? Was this on our radar or it wasn't?
No, sir, it's not part of ARPA, this would have been Esser Funds at that time, but it wasn't part of Esser Funds either.
And it wasn't leaking at that time, we had no idea, I mean, I know we're going back a couple of years here, almost, almost four years.
Well, so, so the issue is, you wouldn't, it was leaking, not as bad as it is now, but you wouldn't consider it for ARPA funds because the state of Connecticut would not give you almost 80% reimbursement if you used ARPA.
Okay, that's the clarification I needed, okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Do you have any other questions? Councilman Vargo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ken, thanks for coming.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for taking the time to speak with me a couple of times today. Um, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding all this because I, like you said, it's a chicken and egg thing, so it kind of seems like we're doing it backwards, but I understand that it's state requirement. So we, as a council, have already, uh, approved that we're going to do this project because we approved a bonding ordinance in fiscal year 25.
Which is, uh, 24.
24.
But that's not enough for the state, the state wants a nice, clean motion from the Board of Ed and the council saying it's okay to proceed with the application and the schematic designs.
Okay, so we've already expended the funds, and is that the 15,800 on page two of your document?
Uh, you've, page two, you've spent 15,800 and the 24,000.
So 15,800 and the 24,000, so
Correct.
As part of the resolution, we're being asked to approve the expenditure of funds, it would be that 39.8?
No, you've already, you've already approved the funds through bonding?
Yep.
The state wants to see a motion saying that the council approves the funds for application even though you've already approved it through bonding.
And is that the 29.8?
No, it's the whole 3.1 million.
It's the whole 3.1, okay. Okay, so we're being asked to allow the Board of Ed to apply for the grant and either accept or reject the grant for whatever reason. Then we're also being asked to establish a building committee for this project and to approve the appointments to that building committee, and we're being asked to approve the spend for this project.
Correct.
Okay.
Ken, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, do we have, I understand the roof needs to be fixed, it's been a long time.
Replaced, yeah.
Yeah, um, do we have that professional assessment on the roof itself?
We do. So the architect, it's, you know, the size of a small phone book here. The architect went out there, he assessed everything, we tested for asbestos, we have a plan, we've identified the replacement material, and we're ready to go.
Okay. Um, are we able to see that assessment? If, if it's, you have like a summary of it, we don't need a huge packet.
Well, the, the, yeah, this is the whole assessment here, but the summary is in the application to the state, it's in your booklet there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
I wasn't, that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
It's quite okay. After the city council approves, assuming that we approve these expenditures and whatnot, does the city council have any other role in this project, or are we now handing it off to the elected Board of Ed?
Well, no, it, it's not a Board of Ed project, it's a city project, it goes to your executive administration. So here's what happens, uh, once you approve this motion, we submit the application, the state gives us the green light, we then go out to an official bid. If the bid comes in, uh, less than our share that we bonded, we're good to go. The mayor has to sign the contract. If the bid comes in over, uh, our share, our 22% share, we either have to do value engineering, pull funds from somewhere else, or not sign a contract.
Okay, and we already received the deliverables for the, uh, the 20, I'm sorry, the 39.8 that we already spent, we, we have those in hand?
Correct.
And, okay. I'm all set for now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lox.
Hi, Ken.
Hello, sir.
Um, who owns the engineering documents at the end of the day? I'm, I'm assuming the city of West Haven does.
Always, yes, sir.
So we'll get those documents at some point in time, the warehouse here, 40 years from now when you gotta do a roof again, you'll have the engineering documents.
That's correct.
You really can't go out for bid until you have all this stuff too.
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's kind of the big thing.
Hundred percent.
You have to have it.
You'd have, without this document, without these documents, you'd have so many change orders.
Sure.
You couldn't have a real number.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I mean, at the end of the day, it all starts with this, you really can't do too much. Even if the state of Connecticut wasn't involved, and you wanted to go out to bid, you had the money, you still would have to have this, I'm sure.
Correct.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Hundred percent, thank you, sir.
Can I, can I ask you to do what you're already going to do, but I just want to make sure, because this project's gonna outlast me as chairman, outlast this council. You're going to come and give, um, updates on this as you go, like you did with the other projects?
Of course.
Is that something I can, okay?
Yeah, I mean, th- this is a pretty simple job, it's a, it's a, you know, a replacement roof, it's not building a new school or building an addition, but I'll certainly come back, give updates.
All right, because this council, I'm sure the next one will definitely want to be informed, you know, it's, it's, uh, a lot of money. Any other questions? Councilwoman Heffernan?
Are you considering any solar panels like at the high school?
So, um, there, there's no solar in this design right now, but the way the roof is being built, solar could be added as a second phase.
Thank you. Councilman Mackey.
Hello, Ken, I just have a quick question in regards to the Brooks Enviro. I, number one, two, three, four, five, and six, of course, as you look at the Thomas Street roof where it says flashing, if it's not indicated, none detected, does that mean there was no asbestos there?
So these are the areas that he tested?
Okay.
And he didn't find any asbestos?
So there was no flashing, so in the flashing at the top, there was no asbestos there? And like, if you go down to where it says below patio, the roof trim and flashing, there was no asbestos there as well?
Correct.
Okay, I just, I'm just looking for you to say none detected.
Because it was done in 95?
Oh.
We got rid of the asbestos then.
Correct, okay.
But we still have the test.
Got it, thank you.
Do I have any other questions? Okay, uh, seeing none, I will have the clerk read off the resolutions, um, and then we'll vote.
Okay, whereas the city council wishes to authorize the West Haven Board of Education to apply to the state of Connecticut Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for a roof replacement project at Savin Rock Community School, the project. And whereas the city council has authorized the expenditure for at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council authorizes the West Haven Board of Education to apply to the state of Connecticut Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the project, and be it further resolved that the city council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project. And be it further resolved, uh, that Dorinda Borr as mayor of the city of West Haven is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to this resolution on behalf of the city of West Haven, and to do and perform all acts and things that she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept a grant for the, for the roof replacement projects at Savin Rock Community School.
Motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and I have a second for the acceptance of this grant, my mic wasn't on, so I'm restating.
Yeah, the motion, that's okay, it was made by Heffernan and seconded by Donovan, I, uh,
Oh, Lox.
Oh, Lox, I'm sorry, I, I can't hear.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the second one now.
Uh, we're going to the second motion?
Going to the second one. Whereas the city council has authorized the West Haven Board of Education to apply to the state of Connecticut Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for a roof replacement project at Savin Rock Community School, the project. And whereas the city council wishes to establish the building committee for the project, now therefore be it resolved that the building committee for the project is hereby established to be the Savin Rock Community School Roof Replacement Project Committee, comprised of the following members and officers. Ken Carney, chairman, Jerry Calabrito, vice chairman, Dwight Knowles, clerk, Gary Purdo, Ken Distacchio, Mark Palmieri, Thomas Hunt, principal of Savin Rock Community School. Further resolved that Dorinda Borr as mayor of the city of West Haven is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to this resolution on behalf of the city of West Haven, and to do and perform all acts and things that she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna entertain another motion to establish a building committee for the Savin Rock Roof Project. So moved, so moved, do I have a second? Okay, second there, any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question with this committee, is this the same committee as we've had before?
Same people, yes.
Same people, right, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, principal, I, I take, so, so what we're doing is we're putting the principal from Savin Rock on the committee for the Savin Rock Committee. The principal of Washington stays on that committee because we have five more months of closeout. But we do have three additional projects coming down the pike that are gonna be state reimbursed, and those principals will probably be involved as well.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Final motion.
Third and final, whereas the city council has authorized the West Haven Board of Education to apply to the state of Connecticut Commissioner of Administrative Services and to, uh, to accept or reject a grant for a roof replacement project at Savin Rock Community School, the project. And whereas the city council has established the building committee for the project, and whereas the city council has authorized at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby authorizes the expenditure of funds from those previously out, previously allocated in the fiscal year 2025 budget for the capital improvement project entitled Savin Rock Community School Roof Replacement, limited to the extent required for fees and costs incurred or to be incurred for preparation of the above referenced schematic drawings and outline specifications. And be it further resolved that Dorinda Borr as mayor of the city of West Haven is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to this resolution on behalf of the city of West Haven, and to do and perform all acts and things that she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the term. to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to authorize an expenditure of funds for schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Savin Rock Roof Project.
Motion.
Motion. Second, thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful night.
You as well.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, at this point, we will recess into committees at seven fifty-three. First up, we have the Finance Committee, Chairman Akbarali.
Thank you, chairman, the time is seven fifty-three, and your committee on finance is now in session. Members present are Councilman Vargo, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, Councilwoman Johnstone, and myself, Councilwoman Akbarali as chair. First communication, we have communication C from Michael Gormaney, Director of Finance regarding the WPCA approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five pre-audit transfer, transferring nine hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the WPCA sewer fund to the City General Fund. I'd like to open this up favorably. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Mr. Gormaney?
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, so what you have before you is, the city is in the process of closing out our books, um, for fiscal year twenty-five. So, what we decided to do was submit the three transfers for the three major funds, the General Fund, Allentown Fire Department, and, um, the sewer fund. So, the first transfer that you have before you is for the, um, sewer fund. We are projecting a surplus within the sewer fund for this year. Um, when we look at revenues, revenues did exceed, um, the budget, um, in actual collections, uh, based on where we were in that point in time, um, for the sewer fund. And then we did have some savings on expenditures as well, um, within the fund as well. So, what we're looking to do is, if you remember in fiscal year twenty-four, the sewer fund actually ran a deficit of nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and the city covered that deficit through our operating fund. So, now that the sewer fund is in a different position for fiscal year twenty-five, um, we're looking to put some of that money back into the city's operating fund, um, to increase our fund balance, as well, as you know, um, on the operating side, that has been one of the areas that we've looked at, um, thanks to this city council, you know, we presented a policy of eight percent is our benchmark as a minimum of fund balance. You know, we're around, um, twelve percent of that right now, but we want to continue to grow that, especially if there's any, um, you know, it's called the rainy day fund for a reason, right? In case there are any emergencies or anything like that. So, one of the things that we felt was fiscally prudent, um, in looking at the sewer fund, was, um, putting some of those back, those funds back from the previous year deficit back into the city's operating fund. Now, we are not done closing the books, obviously, we also go through an audit, so that's why the number, as you have it in front of you today, is nine hundred and two thousand. Um, we believe that we have gotten a majority of, um, all our fiscal year twenty-five items. We believe this is a solid number that's in front of you, but we also have to go through the audit process with our auditors. So, you, sometimes there may be little changes here or there, I haven't experienced anything where there's a major change or anything like that. So, this number could, um, fluctuate, you know, up or, um, you know, remain where it is. So, um, that's why we have an amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety thousand. If there's a reason it goes up, we want to be able to transfer those funds as well, um, back to the operating side. So, um, that's why we added the not to exceed amount in, in, um, in the letter, um, as well. So, that's what we're looking to do with this transfer, happy to answer any questions.
I just had a, a quick question about putting the money into the general fund. If we were to put that money, well, we are putting it in, if we approve it, is it gonna cause any future funding gaps within the WPCA?
So, this is, like every fund, it really is a year-by-year, year-over-year, um, year-over-year matter.
Right.
Right? Um, we have had good years in the sewer fund, and then we run into issues like we did in fiscal year twenty-four where it ran a deficit. Um, we try to, when we're creating the budget and, you know, the commission, uh, for WPCAs creating the budget, we try to take into account things that have happened in the past, like those deficits or any trends that we're seeing. Um, so that way, year-over-year, we are trying to create a balanced budget.
Right.
But, as you know, sometimes things happen. So, it's really a year-over-year matter that we look at with this fund.
That makes sense. Um, I would like to open this up to the committee, Councilwoman Tucker.
Hi, Mike, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, do you know whether or not, uh, this is earmarked, the month, the funds that we're, are we moving this because there's an earmark on these funds?
No, we are pretty much, uh, confident that in the finance department, we have accounted for all the items within fiscal year twenty-five. So, this is truly, like, in the letter, you know, we said revenues exceeded the budget by five hundred and ninety-eight, a little bit over five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, that's not earmarked, that's actual revenue collection, so it's not earmarked for anything. Um, and we saved on the expenditure side, three hu- a little bit over three hundred and three thousand. So, that's really the end of the year, after taking everything into account.
And is this just people are paying their taxes?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we had some better collections on, um, on some of the non-tax side as well, so some of the miscellaneous things like grease traps and fees and things that we bill out on. Um, and then we did see a slightly better collection rate than, you know, anticipated, because remember, when we're doing the budget, um, for WPCA, Allentown, and General Fund, we have to take into account, we obviously don't account for a hundred percent of collections, right? We have to take into account, some people may not pay, or some things may happen, or something. So, when we use a collection rate, it's trying to take into account, um, a lot of those items. So, we did have a slightly better collection rate than we, uh, anticipated with WPCA as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Vargo?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Hi, Michael.
Good evening.
If I recall correctly, the deficit for last fiscal year, the genesis of that was unexpected repairs or repl- or replacements of equipment, is that right? It wasn't operational issues?
Correct, it was a lot of equipment repairs we did, because last year, we, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, there were more vacancies. We seen some more overtime in there, but a majority of it was, um, equipment repairs, capital outlay, things like that, that needed to be done. Because it's a WPCA plant, um, normally, when this stuff comes up, it's an emergency that we have to act upon because it can become an environmental or safety issue. And I think in fiscal year twenty-four, we did see some of the equipment start to break down and things like that, that we had to repair.
So, right now, we're projecting the nine oh-two and change, but we're capping it at the nine ninety. That way, we only recoup what the city gave them as a deficit.
Correct.
Payment last. And, that much is, is that just gonna go into contingency to boost up the, uh, the fund balance?
Right. How it works, what you would see in the audit is, you would see on the general fund side, you would see our operating, um, revenues, expenses, the net, and then you see what's called a transfer in, which would be this that would boost up our bottom line for the fund balance.
Is this contemplated in the next communication that we're going to take up where we're doing all of the transfers?
No, because this is a separate, it's a separate item. That's, the next one is really just covering line item expenditures in the general fund, things that exceeded versus areas we had savings in.
So, there's no second step that we have to do?
No, there's no second step, this is the only step that's needed.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Johnstone?
Oh, is that all here?
Just a little.
That, that, thank you, chairman. So, Mike, I, I, I struggle with this because I think back to Chestnut Street and our aging infrastructure. And I know to what Councilman Vargo just brought up was, a lot of it was equipment, the past, but I still sit here hesitant going, the what-if? Because I know for a fact that a lot of those guys are all playing MacGyver down there with toothpicks and rubber bands and whatnot, fixing things on an everyday basis, and all it takes is that, I, I just call it the Chestnut Factor. So, the question is, is there a backup plan for this?
So, I think what we've tried to do is, if you notice in the twenty-six capital budget, we added a couple of areas of WPCA in there, um, vehicles, other, um, facility, things like that in the capital budget. So, we tried to take that into account. Now, within the sewer fund also, in fiscal year twenty-five, we were also able to make some of those capital outlays as well within the fund itself, and still come out, and still come out to this result. So, we're, we try to build in those what-if scenarios to, and that's, goes into part of the budget process as well, is building in those what-if scenarios. Obviously, we can't predict everything, right? Um, I think, you know, if something was to come up, you know, we'd work with WPCA to make sure that that's covered in a, uh, fiscally prudent way. Um, but again, it's a WPCA plant, so we treat it as, um, a high priority and, like, strict emergency. If something comes up where a pump is about to fail, that's a emergency, right? So, we'll figure out a way to cover it, whether that's coming to the council for a capital transfer, or if the fund can withstand it itself. Um, so, it's, it's kind of, you, either way is good, right? I think your question gets to, why not leave it in WPCA and kind of put it in that reserve? But there's also nothing that says, as we did in twenty-four, the operating side wouldn't cover that anyways.
Councilman Lox?
Hi, Mike, how you doing?
Good evening.
Uh, I want to publicly apologize for, um, Jackson and Scatabo last Thursday night.
Had to bring up the sore neck.
I'm so sorry. I felt compelled. Hey, um, when I saw the, uh, when I saw the money getting transferred, of course, I thought about the thirty-one million dollar bogey that's down the road in terms of replacement of the plant and all that stuff. And to Councilman Johnstone's part, uh, if it were me, I would definitely hold on to that money, I wouldn't let it go. Um, the question I have for you, does this align? And I, I'm sorry for not getting this to you sooner, because I only, I only looked at it this afternoon. Um, Connecticut General Statute, Chapter one oh-three, Section seven dash two six, seven. The statute maintains that funds collected for the sewage system must be kept separate from all other municipal funds that may not be transferred for other municipal purses, purposes unless direct, directly tied to sewer system expenses. I'm assuming that you, you are aligned with this and you have taken into account, and, you know, we're, we're good, we're good to go here.
Yeah, we treat this as a separate fund itself, um, generally, alwa- always.
Yep.
Um, especially when we're accounting for the funds. We're looking at this more along the lines of, we had to cover the operating side.
Right.
Of the fund in fiscal year twenty-four, and this is just recouping some of those funds because the WPCA was in a position to pay those funds, um, back to the city operating side.
Okay.
From the deficit in twenty-four. But, again, we do account, we, um, we account for this fund separately. All the money that, um, went into this in twenty-five was used for those sewer purposes as well.
So, we're not outside of any statutory laws?
Not to my knowledge, we're not out, outside of any.
Limits, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll open it up to the entire council, does anyone on the council have any questions? Seeing there are no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Do you have one opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain.
One abstention? Motion carries, thank you. All right, our next communication from Michael Gormaney, Director of Finance regarding the approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five pre-audit transfers for General Fund, transferring funds between various line items. Gormaney? Oh, I'm sorry, I'd like to open this up favorably.
Motion approved?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, again, as I talk, um, with the WPCA, um, this is the pre-audit for the City General Fund on the city side. Um, you know, last year, we submitted a line item transfer, so the city council could see what, um, line items was, were in a deficit, which ones were covering. Um, so we use that same format again this year. Um, within the document, you'll see, um, we had certain accounts that went over, um, such as overtime went over. Um, throughout the, throughout the year, I've been, I was talking about, you know, we had vacancies and the need to get, you know, certain work done statutorily, or, um, there were folks covering for other people, um, to get those jobs performed within the year, that, some of that created overtime. Um, so, we did have salary savings to cover those overtime, that overtime within various departments. Um, we also did have, um, some overruns in just different departments. Um, again, some of these are unexpected, um, some of the overruns, for example, that are unexpected are benefits, right? We don't always know exactly how much we're gonna pay in benefits, um, under workers' compensation claims, or state benefits, or things like that, because that's based on your claims per year. So, some years, we've seen savings, some years, we, uh, the city has seen overruns, um, within, um, within those accounts. We also had some additional capital outlays, um, within, um, the general fund as well, um, that were covered through operating. We did have some insurance overruns, um, and again, just different employee benefits that went over, because when we do the budget, those are estimated, we don't, some of those are estimated. Um, we don't always know the exact expense until the fiscal year is, um, just about completed. So, through all the line items that had, um, negative balances with them, we actually had enough savings in other areas to cover those, um, negative line items. So, we didn't have to do any extraordinary transfers from like additional revenues or any other areas. Um, we actually had, on the expense side of the budget, enough savings to cover all the line items that went into a negative. Um, I apologize. So, basically, we had, um, about six point four million dollars in, um, negative, in transfers from positive line items to negative line items. So, when you hear that number, that is just, again, within the expense side of the budget. That's not the actual outcome or anything that of the operating side when you compare revenues versus expenditures for the fiscal year. This is really just line items covering line items within the operating side. So, we're just looking as part of the audit, um, as part of the twenty-five audit, our auditor does require us to have council approval for these type of transfers, um, to cover any negative balances. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gormaney. Does anyone have any questions on the committee from Mr. Gormaney? You explained it very well. Um, anyone on the council have any questions? Seeing there are no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Communication E from Michael Gormaney, Director of Finance regarding approval for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five budget revision to increase the Allentown Fire Department budget from nine million, five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars to nine million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars, or final closeout figure, and to make an additional expenditure appropriation to the Allentown- to the Allentown Fire Department pension in the amount of two hundred and thirty one thousand five hundred and sixty nine dollars or final closeout figure. I'd like to open this up favorably, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
Alright, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, so this one is a little different than the first two that I presented because those were actual transfers between either the W P C A fund to the general fund or transfers within a fund. What we're asking you to do here is to actually increase the uh, the budget that was uh set for the Allentown Fire Department. Because they um, again, had revenue, revenue um increases uh over the original budget and um, I'm sorry, this is I'm sorry, my notes froze up here. Um. Alright, there we go. So, um yes, so we had two hundred and sixty eight thousand, a little bit over two hundred and sixty eight thousand in actual increased revenue for um, for the Allentown Fire Department. So again, theirs is also based on a majority of their budget comes from taxes, like I explained with W P C A. There are certain factors that we do when we uh present that budget to you guys. Um, one of the things is we did see a slightly better collection rate um on the A F D side when it came to taxes, um, than we started out when we budgeted. And a few of their smaller miscellaneous revenues did come in higher than budget as well. So overall, we're forecasting about two hundred and si- a little bit over two hundred and sixty eight thousand in increased revenue. Now, on their expenditure side, they did overrun slightly by thirty, a little bit over thirty six thousand. So that's why you see the requests come in at two hundred and thirty one thousand. So we're looking to increase their budget. And then, when we increase their budget, make an additional expenditure to the um pension fund, which is what we've done the last few years to keep paying down that liability, which is um looked at favorably by the credit rating agencies. And again, it also will help us in future budgets because as we continue to pay down that liability with uh future uh with surpluses, that will actually decrease the actual payment that we need to budget um in future years. So, um so again, we're projecting forecasting a surplus for twenty five and we'd like to um increase the budget to accommodate an additional pension payment uh for the Allentown Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. I guess that was my question is what we would do um in place to make, to manage those future cost increases? So, but you answered the question. Thank you. Anyone on the committee have any questions? Councilman Vargo?
Thank you, ma'am chair. So we're being asked to increase by uh two hundred and thirty one thousand five sixty nine or the final number, that's anticipation uh that it could be more or less?
So yeah, we're very confident with this number again, um there have been certain circumstances where the auditor may have come in and said, you need to adjust this by ten thousand dollars, right? Again, I haven't experienced anything major where it's like a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand. I only add this language just because we are not through the final audit process. We're working with uh P K F Joe Santafani on audit things and um, you know, will be completed later on in this year. But I always like to leave that contingency in case there is a change. We're not seeing a change, but again, we're not the auditor.
But that change covers the unlikely event that it might be less. I want to make sure we're not obligated, we're not obligating the city to pay uh more money than what it has.
We would only make that additional um payment um based on the final audit figure.
Okay.
But we do need council approval, at least for this language to do that.
And then lastly, um, surpluses are great, but I get excited about surplus when the expenses are lower than what was projected, not just the revenues. So they went over by thirty six thousand and, and I know that you sort of touched upon this, but how are we, how are we looking in F Y twenty six where we are now, you know, we're a couple few months into it? You know, we're, we're allocating quite a bit of money to another payment, which I, I agree is very important. But are they, are you comfortable with how they're tracking? Is there, is there a, an oddity here that caused them to go over on their expenses?
Um, I think, you know, during the year, I believe they had a couple of vacancies that the chief filled. Um, so some of that may have been overtime. We really didn't see um a lot of like equipment and repairs. We did see like one maintenance agreement, which again, we estimate for because sometimes maintenance agreements, we put in ten percent, comes in at fifteen percent. We did see a couple of maintenance agreements in um twenty five that came in. We did increase those in the twenty six year when we did the A F D budget. So again, it wasn't anything major. I think a couple of things just came in more than we anticipated. We believe we accounted for those in twenty six. Right now, tracking A F D, we don't see anything major. Um, I think the chief has a good um handle on his personnel with overtime and other things like that. So we're not seeing anything major at this moment.
So, so in your opinion, it's more advantageous to the city and to A F D to pay down that obligation and the benefits of that than it is to kind of tuck that money away for a little while?
Correct, and I think A F D um has a decent fund balance um that we're going through the audit process itself, that if anything major did actually come up, they would have um an adequate fund balance to cover that as well.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else on the committee have any questions? Anyone on the council have any questions for Mr. Gorman? Seeing there are no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Right up next from Michael Gorman, Director of Finance requesting city council approval to create a new capital project titled Communications and Technology Upgrades in the amount of two hundred and fifty three thousand one dollar for the Malloy site where funding is available by reclassifying, transferring previously approved and bonded projects for the police phone system upgrade, one hundred thousand dollars and police technology balance, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, I'm sorry, one hundred and fifty three thousand one dollar. I'd like to open this up favorably, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
Alright, thank you, Chairwoman. So, as this mentions, we are looking at the Malloy site and just the various upgrades. I think um, you know, everyone is aware of all the great things that are happening with that site, all the upgrades, um renovations and things like that that are going on um into making that a, a senior community um center uh for the city of West Haven. With doing this comes various upgrades that we need to do and things like that, especially from a technological standpoint. One of the things that finance in conjunction with the mayor and just different department heads have been doing is looking at fiscally prudent ways to accomplish some of these tasks to do it. And one of the things we've been looking at are capital projects um from the past, right? Money that has been borrowed that may have been for a specific project. Are there any savings on that project? Have we used a grant to supplement that project that where maybe funds are available? Because a grant did cover it. Excuse me, this is one of those situations. So as outlined in the memo, what we're looking to do is take some of the um money that was originally earmarked for technology um within the P D. And we are looking to upgrade, uh, use those, that funding to upgrade the Malloy site with different technological and um communications. So with the phone system upgrade, uh, the phone system project is one of those examples. When it, when um that money was originally allocated in twenty two, they didn't know there was a grant out there for that. We actually ended up getting a grant um a year, about a year and a half later to do the phone system within the P D. So we ended up using that grant instead of these bonding funds to upgrade the P D phone system, which meant this was now available because the grant covered one hundred percent of the actual cost that was needed for that phone system. So now that money is available and we said, well, we now have Malloy that needs, you know, different technological needs including communications and things like that, that would be an appropriate use of transferring the funds. Same thing with technology, a lot of the technology was going towards cameras, body cams, things like that, different technological needs that the P D needed. You know, we just did the whole Axon body camera thing, which saved us a lot of money. You know, and redoing that contract and rebonding those funds. They've, we've upgraded um through different funding sources, different technological needs that the P D has needed over the last few years because this project was originally allocated in twenty three. So in looking at that, um, there was a balance in this account of a hundred and fifty three thousand and one dollar. So we said, we're trying to upgrade Malloy, we're trying to upgrade the site, give them great technological great technological upgrades there. And it just makes sense because we don't have to borrow more money to do this. We already borrowed the money. This is already on a structured debt. Um, what's called structured debt payments, we would have to repay this money anyways, whether to balance it sat there or we transferred, transferred it for another needs. So this is just um a prudent way of spending money that we're already repaying, making sure that it's used for um a great project. Happy to answer any questions.
Would there be any um issues in the audit if we were to use or any, I guess you would say, are there any bonding requirements that would cause an issue in the audit?
So the bonding requirements, when you redesignate, this is called redesignating um previously bonded funds, right? So the, the requirement is that number one, it has to go back to city council because you're not using it for what the city council originally designated the funds for, right? The second requirement, um, when I was talking to um our lawyers, Pullman and Comley is it has to be within the same type of useful life that it was bonded for. So for example, technological needs are usually five years, right? I couldn't take these funds and say, I want to do um a roof replacement because that would be more along the lines of ten years or twenty years, right? It usually has to be within that same bucket, which is why we said, let's use this for technological needs, which is actually closer to
Right.
what it was originally approved for, just not for the P D.
Okay.
So, so um, yes, so in talking to Pullman and Comley um regarding this, um, we are within those guidelines.
Thank you. Anyone on the committee have any questions? Councilman Vargo?
Thank you. I want to recognize that um, this is the kind of outside the box thinking that we've needed for a while and how, how do we use the funds that we already have uh and maximize the, the benefit? So thank you to your team and to the mayor um for doing that. My only question is that the police department had an expectation of what they needed. Did they get everything they needed?
From what I understand, um, the mayor.
Yes, sorry, good question. Simply put, uh, the police department requested funding for telephone system and technology. We had gotten that public safety package from the state of Connecticut, some state representative that was helping out the police department for eight hundred thousand dollars. So that covered the phone system and then some and technology. So as Michael said, the funding is sitting there, we already borrowed it for those purposes. We got a state grant. It's already been installed, everything that they need, um, and they still have, we didn't take all of the capital funding, they still have other funding there available.
Great, it's just important to me that they get what they, what they need and what they expect to sell.
So, yep, and adding it to the mayor in fiscal year twenty five um and fiscal year twenty six, we did allocate P D technology on the capital side as well. So we're still, you know, within doing projects with the P D from a technological standpoint.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions? Uh, Chairman?
So it's a housekeeping matter, we're just wondering. Uh, you, you said the project was from twenty twenty two, does it have to be noted on the authorizing resolution that it came from twenty two or because it's still in that line, line item, can it just state that it's coming from that line item?
It's still on the line item. I think, I think we referenced it when we did the letter and which budget year it came from, so it's still within the line item, I believe.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just, I mean, just for record keeping, that's the, where I come from on this. If, if you don't think the resolution needs to say that it was, that it's actually coming from the twenty twenty two
I'm gonna defer to.
Previous bonding. Sorry.
Well, it's coming from a line item and I'm not sure if there is a, an account number on it.
There is not.
If it would make it easier, I could amend, I could easily amend the um resolution.
I just don't want the bonding people to get mad at us.
Now, alright, um, there's nothing magic about the words on that paper, so it's what's said into the record. So you could amend that now and I'll change the printed version um for the, for the.
I just, I just recall in the past that they're pretty strict, the bonding attorney people, about what, how it's worded. So that's my only question.
I think, I think.
It's fine, it's fine.
Yeah, I think if you want, I think if you want in the letter, we have the years there. I think if you want to add that to the resolution, um, that would be perfectly fine. I mean, it just creates, you know, um, more transparency on those bonding projects.
So I guess, what, what's the final? What is the final change that we have to make?
You don't have to make anything, you don't, well, you don't have to make any amendments. You're voting on this communication, the resolution that could form though to the letter, so you could add those, those years.
Okay, yeah, that's, she's manually adding them right now.
Yeah.
So I think how I have it in the letter is I have the fiscal year, the project name, and then the balance of the project. I think you literally just add that and we're good.
In process.
There we go.
Uh, also furthermore, I just wanted to mention, just like uh, Councilman Vargo said, I'm a big proponent of this project and thinking outside the box, uh, you know, to get funds for it, doing a piecemeal, whatever gets it to fruition, whether it be next year or ten years from now, it benefits the entire community, it's in the right spot and uh, I, we just, I, I definitely want to see it happen. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions? Seeing there are no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gorman, I really appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Welcome. Up next, we have Communication H from Mayor Duran de Boer regarding the approval to waive all permitting fees for the Halloween on the Green event for twenty twenty five. I'd like to open this up favorably. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 it's okay. Second from the Finance Committee?
Second, sorry.
Thank you. Mayor Boer, did you want to talk about the waiving the fees?
Yes, yes, sure. So the Halloween on the Green, which is put together by West Haven United in collaboration with the city um, does an amazing job. It's really grown over the years, it's a good event. Um, and there's always different departments that we want to go check it out, make sure it's safe and healthy and um only the city council can waive those fees, so we ask that you waive those fees, so it's one less expense for the volunteers to have.
Very good, thank you, Mayor Boer. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
Wait, did I say the date?
Yes.
I did, okay, I want to make sure people know, it's October twenty fifth, Saturday night.
Thank you. Anyone on the committee have any questions for Mayor Boer? Anyone on the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Chairman, the time is now eight thirty two and your committee on finance is now. Chairman, the time is now 8:32 and your Committee on Finance is now closed.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to Legislative Matters Committee. Chairman Vargo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is 8:32 and your Committee on Legislative Matters is now in session. Council members present are Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, Councilwoman Melton, Councilman Johnstone, and myself acting as chair. First item on this evening's agenda is Communication B. from Mayor Durin de Boer regarding an amendment to Chapter 206, Streets and Sidewalks Adopting Article 8 Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices. We do need to have a first read, but so that we can have a discussion. May I have a motion to bring this out for discussion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Attorney Dorsey, would you take the podium? So I know that you and Chief Purno are very excited about this. Could you just give us a rundown of what this is going to do for us?
Certainly. So what this ordinance does, it allows the city of West Haven to use automated traffic enforcement safety devices, other, otherwise known as speed cameras. There is a enabling statute passed by the Connecticut State Legislature.
Is this a hint, Mr. Chairman?
So there's a, there's a statute that's been recently passed by the Connecticut Legislature that allows municipalities to actually pass an ordinance, which makes it a violation to speed in certain school zones, safety zones, areas of high traffic, pedestrian traffic, and also to find people for running red lights, solid red lights. That's all the statute allows the municipality to do because we are, this is, you know, beyond our normal prescribed police powers. It's allowing the city to actually issue citations. So with that responsibility comes the necessity for us to offer hearings for violators, or alleged violators, including appeals to the Superior Court, if they wish to go that far. So this ordinance sets up fines for two violations. One, as I said, is speeding 10 miles an hour over a posted speed limit. And the other is failure to stop at a solid red light. The fines are $50 for the first offense, $75 for a subsequent offense within one year of the prior offense. By statute, we can make them lower, but the statute, the enabling statute provides a maximum of $75, or excuse me, a maximum of $50 for the first violation, $75 for the next. The information that's obtained by these devices is limited to only evidence of an offense, of one of these two offenses, speeding or running the red light. There are strict statutory restrictions on, on this information. It can't be used for evidence of another crime of a different nature. It's, it's got to be strictly limited. There is provisions in the Connecticut General Statutes and our ordinance as well with respect to personal information, which can't be used or divulged. That's very important as well. And it also, excuse me, the statutory scheme sets up, or utilizes the Police Commission to hold hearings, public hearings with respect to the areas that these cameras and devices would be installed. There'd be a public hearing before any camera or device is placed in the city. That, after the public hearing by the Board of Police Commissioners, the, the locations have to be approved by the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation. So it's a process. Another aspect of the enabling statute and thus our ordinance is that the, we can contract with a third party who will supply and install and maintain and operate the systems. So they would detect when a violation has occurred. They would then turn the matter over to the Police Department to issue the citations and then the hearing process would take, you know, take place. Other than that, I know, open up the questions from the, from the council.
Thank you. I know that this was the subject, I think, of an article a little while ago. So I had already received some preliminary feedback without even actually reading, getting a copy of this.
Right.
This has gone through a couple of iterations. But just to clarify a few things, this is a city fine, not a criminal ticket, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a civil penalty. What are, what are the city's enforcement authorities for it? So if we send it out and they say, I'm not going to pay this, do we have any recourse?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we would have the same recourse that we would have collecting any other fine or violation in the city under any other ordinance. It's with the Police Department. But yes, we would have enforcement.
Is there a way to secure the debt, so to speak? If somebody, could, could we, I don't think we could lean the vehicle.
I, yeah, I didn't find a provision, I didn't find a provision in the enabling statute that says we can, we can tell the Department of Motor Vehicles and then their suspension would be, you know, their, their license would be suspended or anything of that nature. No, no. So it's not that drastic. It'd be like collecting any other fee, any other fee due to the city of West Haven.
I understand that there's a $75 increase fine for any penalty, you know, over the first one. Is there any, is there anything that can be done? Or does the enable stat, enabling statute allow us to do anything if it's a chronic repeating offender? Or do they just get hit with $75 fines?
$75 fines if, if it, the next, the next offense is committed within a year. So, yeah, so after that, after that year transpires with no other violations, it becomes a $50 fine again.
Okay. And the recordings cannot be used? So let's say that somebody's speeding in a school zone. They are issued the fine from the city, but that can't be used for any other purpose to enforce, to penalize them for speeding in a school zone. Is that right?
That's, that's correct, and, and including state enforcement of, of penal code.
Where does the personal information get stored, do you know?
The personal information store is stored by the company that is hired to install, maintain, and operate the equipment. Offhand, I don't know if there, in the enabling statute, if there is a timeframe for keeping the information, but I know there's a strict timeframe that the city would have to issue the citation. Thank you. 30 days from knowledge of the.
So the system will, if I'm driving down the road and I'm speeding and I'm caught by this system, it'll alert a, the company that installed it?
Correct.
And then they will notify West Haven PD?
Right.
And then the data, the, the video recording and the information will go to West Haven PD?
Correct.
And that it'll be a West Haven police officer that will review and make the final determination? It's not this third-party company?
As, no, it's not the third-party company. As our ordinance is set up, it's the Police Department right now.
Okay.
Right. And there, there's only cer, certain people who are certified or qualified to run a registration on, on a car. So, so right now, our ordinance is set up that way. We're not asking for any other special authorizations for anybody else in the third-party company or anyone constables at this point. No, it would be the Police Department, right?
Have we selected a vendor for this yet?
We have not.
Okay. And how will it be paid for?
How would it be paid for?
Right, so I'm assuming there's a service contract or?
There would be a service contract. I'm sure the contract, if it was for more than three years, would come before this council. It would be, go out to bid. And the fees that we collect, it's, you know, it's not, it's not intended to be a money generator for the city. So the fees that we collect go back into traffic safety and ideally into the system of that, that we're, you know, we're running with this third-party.
So, so we're obligated to pay whatever the, the installation or service costs or whatever is? So presumably, the collection of those fines will go to pay for that. And then anything that is over and above that annual cost will go back to traffic enforcement or?
Exactly.
Something of the similar nature.
Right. And there's, there can't be a, a payment scheme set up where it's, the third-party is paid based on the number of violations they find, okay? So there's no, there's just a little added protection, so there's no incentive for over-enforcement or that kind of thing.
Okay. Any questions from the committee? Councilwoman Melton?
Thank you, Chairman Vargo. I just want to follow up, just to make sure I'm clear in terms of ultimately how you would enforce a non, you know, this, this could be entered as a judgment if someone either doesn't appear for a hearing or, you know, they fail to pay. Is that correct?
If they fail to pay, they don't have to come to a hearing. They can pay.
Or, or they could.
Or they can request a hearing.
Yeah, or they could request a hearing.
Correct.
And so that judgment would be entered like any other judgment?
No.
No?
So, so we would, we would, we would make a determination, the municipality would make a finding, okay, that a violation has occurred. Then we would then issue the citation or uphold the citation, attempt to collect it. But we would also advise the offender of their right to appeal to the Superior Court. So we don't get a Superior Court judgment. They might go try to appeal our citation to a Superior Court, right? In which case, the judgment would be against the city of West Haven and we would have to throw out our citation. We couldn't enforce it. So it's not, it's not a civil judgment. It's not a criminal judgment. It's a, it's a citation for an offense for which there, there is a provision for a hearing.
And there's no further recourse? Is that, that's sort of what you're saying?
No, there's recourse. We could bring us, I suppose we could bring some kind of enforcement action. What I did not find in the statute, though, is any kind of provision where we would notify the Department of Motor Vehicles and then non-payment of fines would result in license suspension. I did not find anything like that.
So there's, so an enforcement action, so this ultimately would not necessarily result in non-payment of a judgment and perhaps a lien against property or anything like that? It's just?
I wouldn't imagine for $50 or $75, but we should go after the people who are not paying, yeah.
And, and what about, I mean, there are many people who come into the city who are not people who live here. Are you capturing those folks as well?
Yeah, we have, the statute provides again for a 30-day window to track down the information of out-of-state violators. And we can issue citations to out-of-state violators, yeah.
But again, there's no real recourse against someone who, who's visiting from California.
No recourse against them? Yeah, I mean, yeah. They, they might not, yeah. So I don't, I don't think that we would subpoena someone back from California to pay a $50 fine in West Haven.
I just want to be clear on what we're talking about here.
Or, yeah.
Thank you.
Attorney Dorsey, I don't know if, if you would know this or perhaps the mayor, what does, if we approve this in two weeks, what does the rollout look like?
Time, timeframe wise?
Well, in, in the process of, I know we have to, you know, the, who makes the decision of who, of what company to hire? I understand the Board of Police Commissioners approves the locations and the state signs off on that.
Right.
Is there an educational component or, or public outreach component to this?
There is. So there are different requirements in the enabling statute, okay? Notices to the public, publication in the paper that there's going to be cameras installed, devices, and that there's also going to be signage on the streets, warning drivers that they're going to, you know, that there's cameras in use for speeding and for red lights. That's in the enabling statute, okay? So our, our ordinance is designed to follow very closely with the, with that enabling statute. It makes reference to it throughout, different provisions of the general statutes, which may, from time to time, be amended, but we have to follow those courses of action very, very specifically.
I have a couple of technical questions.
Can I just answer the second part of your question? How do we pick the vendor? We go to bid?
I have a couple of.
I think I've mentioned that, yeah. We would go to bid, definitely.
Couple of technical questions and if you don't know the answer, I'll, I can get that from the PD.
Yeah.
Say, for example, that one is decided to be installed on Jones Hill Road in front of McRill in my district. How, would, any idea of how or where a speed camera, not a red light camera, but a speed camera will be installed?
That's beyond my, my knowledge.
And so no idea of, is it continuously running and, and recording on a 24/7 basis?
I, I don't, at this point, I don't know.
Okay.
I have meetings set up with the Police Department and the Police Chief to get, answer those very specific questions.
Okay. I think for our next meeting, after the public hearing, I think I would, we would like somebody, I would like somebody from the Police Department that had, would have that knowledge because I, I'm thinking of this, this might be a camera, similar to a camera that's on the boardwalk and you're in a public space and you're expected to be recorded 24/7. Is, is the same expectation going to be just walking down the street? You know, of a residential neighborhood? I'm just, I'm curious about that. Other questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tucker?
Hi. I guess my concern for this is privacy, you know? And I understand speeding and we don't, we all don't want that. But I just think about the, you call it enabling or enforcement statute. That's what it is.
The, yeah.
Enforcement statute, right? So I understand it's easy to find people who live here in the city. But if you think about the corridor, like the Post Road, there's a lot of people that pass through here that don't live in the city. So I think this is gonna potentially create a dynamic where we're gonna end up being penalized if we're, if we're the ones that are, you know what I'm saying? I don't think it's gonna be, it's not gonna be equally, equal justice distributed to everybody who is going over the speed limit. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. And I just worry also about, you know, the enforceability of it all. Imagine some, some person who may be older, maybe doesn't have a whole lot of money, but the kid drives the car. The kid's speeding. The parents, whoever that is, is gonna get the ticket. And it's enforceable for that person. I just, you know, I see a lot of, you know, things and I worry about like, you know, just privacy and losing just, losing our freedom. That's what this feels like to me. I don't like it. So I get it, we'll have a public hearing and all the things, but I don't like it. Just saying.
Councilwoman Melton?
Thank you. So if there's a police car sitting at a light and they see someone speeding and go on a chase and, you know, stop someone and issue a ticket for that violation, that is treated differently from a legal perspective in terms of enforcement?
Absolutely.
Than having cameras there picking up that same violation for which there's really much, a much lesser degree of recourse against that individual who committed that speeding violation. Is that correct?
That's correct. Speeding in a school zone is a.
Or speeding anywhere.
Speeding anywhere, but speeding in a school zone is, is a, is a, is a pretty big deal and it's, 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 it's a crime. It's a penal code, yeah. This is not penal code, right?
It's not penal code, but it is a penalty that would be subject to the penal code if it was a police officer. if it was a police officer that was-
Right.
Catching that person doing the speeding.
Yes.
And one of my concerns would be, would there be a lesser degree of, oh, oh, we understand that we're trying to, you can't catch everyone, you're not always around, but does it kind of take you down a slippery slope where there's, there are fewer officers sort of performing that particular type of, uh, you know, uh, not, I guess, yeah, looking at speeding violations versus, you know, are we freeing up the police department to go do more serious things or are we, you know, I'm just trying to understand that kind of balance, which I'm having a little bit of difficulty understanding here.
Yeah, so this is in addition to the penal code.
Right, I understand.
Right, um, and if a police officer, I think, witnesses somebody speeding, they're going to apprehend the speeder, so this is in lieu of that. So it's a third party detecting-
Right.
Turning it over to the police department. I don't, I don't know if it's gonna deter speeders or not, or it's gonna be another arrow in the quiver, I suppose it would be. Uh, I think it would be good to hear from the police chief, uh, on his perspective on it, um, whether he thinks it's a useful, uh, or necessary arrow in the quiver, um, but yeah, it's a consideration, but I have no way of really answering that from a legal basis, other than to, to show that, that it's different, it's not, this is not crime, this is offense, it's not, uh, the penal code, it's our ability as a city to find.
It is a crime unless it's caught on camera and prosecuted from that perspective as opposed to a police-
A police officer, right.
A police officer catching the person doing the same, very same thing.
Very same thing, yeah, we, we classify it as a violation, we're not allowed to classify it with the penal, through the penal code, no.
Thank you.
The way I look at that issue that Councilwoman Melton is bringing up is that we unfortunately have neither the luxury of staffing or financing to pay for an officer's set a speed trap. So instead of pulling somebody off of, uh, patrol, um, that this is a, this is a workaround to that, so that way we can enforce our speed limits, keep those areas safe, but not overburden the human resources of the police department, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Again, I would, I would, um, I would like to hear from, uh, Chief Perno, his perspective on this, I mean, I've had many conversations with him about it, I know he's, you know-
Well, I, he, he's pulled me aside, I, I know that he's very excited.
Yeah, he thinks this is gonna be a useful, uh, tool for deterring speeders, uh, and people running red lights in the city of West Haven, that's his perspective, yeah.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman, um, just, just to kinda throw an interesting tidbit of information out there, talking to the Traffic Division, did you know, we, we did, we've done this to ourselves, ninety percent of the citations the PD hands out, the individual lives right around the corner, and the excuse is always somewhat the same. Oh, I know these roads, I've lived here my whole life, nothing's ever happened, it's our own neighbors and ourselves doing this to ourselves, so we brought this on ourselves. To Mr. Dorsey's point, yes, Chief Perno's very much, I, I, yeah, I support it and I'll leave it at that, but Paul, I do have a question for you, just for clarification. Under the citation hearing, says citation hearings shall be conducted by citation hearing officers appointed by the mayor, is that referring to the police commission or are we, Mayor, are we setting a whole different, um-
No, we have, we have hearing officers for other things.
We, we did this with the blight fines, remember, we had blight fines, but we couldn't, we couldn't actually assess a blight fine to anyone because we never had a hearing officer, so you have to, have to appoint a hearing officers, in this case, officers, um, to review the appeals in order to-
Gotcha, thank you. That's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Councilwoman Tucker?
Uh, what would be the qualifications for the hearing officers?
Well-
Well, I didn't get that far yet, but, um, it would be somebody that I think is ethical and fair and, you know, um, uh, somebody that I think, you know, I gotta look, I gotta look at, look at that, just like any board and commission, right? I would, uh, make sure they were qualified and experienced.
And then another question about, um, data and privacy-related concerns like I mentioned, so I know that you said this is a third party, this would be a third party.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Who would, who would own the information about the per, the people?
Who would own it? I don't think there would be, um, I- Uh, it would be the city's proper, I think it would be the city's information, and we would have to dispose of it and use it according to the statute, so if we don't take action within thirty days, okay, we, it's, we lose that right, and the statute is, is very, very specific about it, it's not F.O.I.-able, um, we can't, uh, um, use it for any other purpose than to prove these two violations, that's it.
It can't be given to insurance companies?
No, 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 absolutely not.
Any other third, any other party beyond the third party?
No.
The third party's third party.
Unlike cameras that we have in the city right now, so this is really restrictive, these devices are, the use of these devices and what they record is super restrictive.
Okay, which brings me to my last question, and it's about where these cameras are gonna be put, and you know, I'm like, cameras are my, 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 they're great, but they could also be problematic, and so just because I want, I, you know, if we're gonna do this, I want it to be fair and balanced, and I don't want them to all be on one side of town or the other, people speed and, you know, there's places where people speed and all that, but I would like to be able to understand where they're gonna be put, so that I can feel comfortable that they're gonna be equally distributed throughout West Haven, um, if we're gonna go there, so I know that this process sounds like this comes before that, but I would like some type of an assurance that there's gonna be some oversight for that and that the distribution is gonna be balanced.
Right, right, and the, and the oversight is built into, well, it's in the statute, and so it's therefore built into our ordinance, there has to be public hearings before any, any camera or device can be placed anywhere, it has to be, uh, approved by the, um, Board of Police Commissioners, then that whole plan or locations of any given, uh, um, camera or device goes to the Connecticut Department of Transportation for its approval, and I, I would, I would imagine that they're looking for things like that in their approval, alright? We, we, we have to show a high area, a high-traffic area, school zone, um, you know, high pedestrian, uh, place where, um, there's speeding and people running red lights.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm assuming that there's, there's gonna be data that is going to be used to benchmark where to put these?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, what? I did? We are, so, um, so my question is, I'm, I'm assuming that there's some kind of data benchmarks that are gonna be used to say that these is, uh, you know, hi, high-traveled areas or school zones?
There's a host of state standards to use, oh yeah, oh yeah.
So, so we can't, so the Board of Police Commissioners can't just put it anywhere they want, will and will not?
No, and then they have to get the, it has to get the, the blessing from the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
Oh yeah.
Councilwoman Melton?
Thank you, uh, I just wanna go back to, uh, something that, uh, Councilwoman Tucker raised, um, and you said that you can't make a FOIA request, for example, or you can't use these cameras for anything else, however, if someone is speeding and then there is an accident, whether you hit a pedestrian or you hit another car or another car hits you, then what do you think that camera, that, that video, would that be usable in a court proceeding by an insurance company defending, asking for that?
Certainly not the insurance company, and as the way the, the way the enabling statutes are, are drafted now, the answer is no in a criminal proceeding.
Even if there is, even if you're seeking proof of, sort of evidence of what actually happened during that accident?
Yes. It's, 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 it's quite, quite explicit, um, uh, Councilman Lox has been through this, the enabling statutes with me as, as, as Councilman Vargo has, um, and they're, they're complex and they're, 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 um, you know, really, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, they're comprehensive, okay, uh, with all of these issues, um, yeah.
All set? Any other, Chairman? Madam Mayor?
We're still in committee though, right?
We are.
I'll take the time then, um, just to, uh, Councilwoman Tucker's point, um, if it is the PD that's pushing this and what Councilman Vargo said, I would like to hear from the PD as we muddle through this, as to their vision, um, what the benefits they see, since they're the ones that are pushing this, and where the cameras, cameras will be placed, it just seems like it's, uh, something that we shouldn't bypass in, in our discussion, so if we can make that happen at some point and note it to Carla, that'd be fantastic, thank you.
Agreed, and, and I do have, wanna follow up on some of those technical questions, um, that I was asking, so I think that if we have a representative of the police department, that would be very helpful at our next meeting. Uh, any other discussion in committee? Okay, uh, we're gonna need to set this down for a public hearing, so I'm gonna ask the first and second to rescind, if you'd like to, sure, Mayor.
Geez, thanks, everybody took a breath. Um, I just wanted to, cause they're all really good questions, right? It's new, um, few municipalities have been doing this, you know, I hear, aren't we doing this, um, we wanna cross our Ts and dot our Is, cause they're really good questions and we wanna make sure we follow the statute, um, just a couple of things, you know, someone asked, and I forget who asked what, um, does this free up our police to do other things? It really, it really doesn't because our police are not sitting there, you know, monitoring, uh, speeding, um, they're out, you know, doing some very heavy, they got a heavy lift out there, um, so they're working on a lot of, uh, critical issues, um, but eventually, if people continue to get this ticket and they start to slow down, it will impact the job they do, it will start to help the job they do because now when they are on the route, road, there are more safer drivers in our streets, and that was, that's what this is all about, remember, that the locations are school zones and pedestrian safety zones, so we know who, which, what our schools are, right? So we're gonna look to put them around the schools, and then our pedestrian safety zones, just like when we apply for a grant for, you know, sidewalks or, uh, crosswalks or flashing lights, we look at pedestrian data, right? So we have that, um, and it shows where there's been pedestrian accidents, so the police department certainly aren't going to put these, um, we're not gonna pay to put these actually, um, in places where it's not a pedestrian zone, safety or a school. There was also a question about, um, you know, you, we wanna make sure there's equal distribution, if there's, if there's more schools and say pedestrian safety zones in one area than the other, then, you know, that's, that's where they're gonna go. Um, when we bid, we will find out about what the cameras are, so for example, one company, if you, if you work with them, then for every camera you buy, they give you a free camera, um, some they take a certain percentage, some, you know, so that's what bidding's all about, um, what is it gonna be, you know, the most, uh, reasonable and appropriate contract for us, right? So we'll all look at that, and if it's, as Paul said, if Attorney Dorsey said, if it's over three years, it'll come to you. Um, I did wanna, uh, comment on one thing that Councilwoman Tucker said though, about the kid who's driving the mother's car, and then she gets a ticket, you know what? That mother should know that that kid is speeding in that car, cause God forbid that kid hit somebody, you know what? It's a very expensive reminder to slow down, that's what, that's what this is all about, it's an expensive reminder to slow down and, you know, you get that ticket, you know, say, "Slow down my car, you're not taking it because God forbid you hurt someone," um, or yourself, yes, yes, um, and then, let's see, uh, that's about it, I think, uh, Attorney Dorsey did a lot of this, just as a reminder, all of these locations have to be approved, you know, the state legislation was designed in order to avoid, um, challenges of where they're placed, so police commission will help decide where they go based on data, um, it goes to the state, state approves those locations, um, and then, and then we bid it, and then we bid it.
If I might, just to, um, get back to the Councilwoman's question with respect to, um, retention of data and ownership of data, your question as well, so, uh, it's, um, the, the information is to be held by the city and it has to be destroyed within thirty days of a resolution, either of a payment or a resolution of a hearing or the appeal, um, so, uh, yeah, and so, uh, absolutely no identifiable, identifiable information shall be disclosed by the city or a vendor to any person or entity, including any law enforcement unit, uh, except where the disclosure is made in connection with the charging, collection and enforcement of the fines imposed by our ordinance, yeah.
Sure.
So, you can't use the video, but you have an officer who sees what happened, and he unsees that if you're wanting to prosecute someone for a, let's say, a real, an accident or something like that?
You can't use the, you can't use the information as evidence.
You can't use the video or you can't use the knowledge that you glean from the-
You could always, you, you, if, if an officer, um, comes across some, something in his investigation, okay, a lead, that's one thing, that's very, very different than using that in a criminal proceeding as evidence, this data cannot be used as evidence in a criminal proceeding.
In any way, shape or form?
Not, not pursuant to the enabling statute, yeah.
I'm sorry, it's new to me, but I-
Yeah.
I find it, uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's really splitting a hair between the, uh, civil offense and the, uh, criminal offense, it's pretty neat.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, uh, can the first and the second rescind?
I was the first, okay, I was the first.
Rescind first, rescind second.
Rescind your first.
Oh, I rescind my second.
Excellent.
I withdraw my first.
Thank you, uh, we will set this down for a public hearing on October twenty-seventh at six fifty-five. Communication D from September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five agenda from Michael Gorman, Director of Finance regarding an ordinance amendment updating Chapter forty-two, Section Six, Competitive Bidding of the City of West Haven Ordinance, to be in conformity with State of Connecticut General Statute seven dash one forty-eight V, Requirements for Competitive Bidding, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you, thank you, um, we've had the public hearing, there was no comments, and, um, we've had discussion with Attorney Dorsey at our last meeting, is there any further discussion from the committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Communication I from the July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five agenda from Mayor Durinda Bora regarding an ordinance amending Chapter ninety-seven of the Code of the City of West Haven, Fair Rank Commission, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you, uh, again, this is the, uh, updated proposed ordinance, uh, that came out of the Fair Rank Commission, we've had a public hearing, there was no comment, any further discussion in the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries, Mr. Chairman, the time is nine eleven and the Committee on Legislative Matters is concluded.
Thank you very much, we will convene to council as a whole at nine twelve, moving on to unfinished, unfinished business, there is none, which brings us back to committee reports, will the clerk please read Communication A, Overpayment Refunds into the record?
Communication A from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for September twenty-twenty-five will be filed with tonight's minutes.
Thank you, first up for the report back, Finance Committee, Chairwoman Akbarali.
First up for the report back, Finance Committee Chairwoman Akbarali.
Thank you, Chairman. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 14th day of October to consider the matter of Communication C regarding WPCA approval of fiscal year 2024 to 2025 pre-audit transfer, transferring $902,215 amount not to exceed $990,000 from the WPCA sewer fund to the City General Fund. It is the unanimous opinion of the following motion, I'm sorry, it is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves a transfer of surplus funds from fiscal year 2025 sewer fund account number 24048048-48100 in the amount not to exceed $990,000 to the General Fund account number 10121054-54390. And I so move.
Hi, I'm back. Um, did you say unanimous? Was that the one where, um?
Unanimous. Was it?
It wasn't unanimous, it was an extension? Okay, uh, majority.
Majority, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Heffernan as well.
No, don't be.
I have a motion to approve a matter regarding WPCA approval of fiscal year 2425 pre-audit transfer to the City General Fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second over there. Any discussion? All tired out, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstained.
Two abstentions. Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. For yourself as well?
Yes.
Thank you for the correction, I appreciate it. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 14th day of October to consider the matter of Communication D regarding approval of fiscal year?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I am so sorry.
What?
That was six votes, yes. Oh, you count. Seven, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Thank you for acknowledging me.
I, were you?
That's why I was confused at first, but I, I, it was only, yeah.
It's all his fault.
Trap liver. Please continue.
Okay, I'll start over, no, it's okay. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 14th day of October to consider the matter of Communication D regarding approval of fiscal year 2024 to 2025 pre-audit transfers for General Fund transferring funds between various line items. It is the unanimous opinion, that, I'm sorry, it is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the transfer of funds from various line items with the General Fund for fiscal year 2025 as set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part of here of, I'm sorry, made a part here of by reference. And I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding approval of fiscal year 2425 pre-audit transfers, uh, for the General Fund, which is transferring funds between various line items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Please continue.
Thank you. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 14th day of October to consider the matter of Communication E regarding approval of fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget revision to increase the Allentown Fire Department budget from nine, not, I'm sorry, $9,5367 to $9,273,596 or final closeout figure. And to make an additional expenditure appropriation to the Allentown Fire Department pension in the amount of $231,569,000 or final closeout figure. It is a unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Whereas the Allentown Fire Department has a projected excess of revenues above budget for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $231,569,000. And whereas the Allentown Fire Department wishes to revise its fiscal year 2025 budget from $9,5367,000 to $9,270,596,000, I'm sorry, 900, $9,270,596,000, by making the additional pension fund contribution in the amount of $231,569,000 or final closeout figure. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby authorizes a revision to the fiscal year 2025 revenue and expenditures budget of the Allentown Fire Department from $9,5367,000, I don't know why I keep doing that, $67,000 to $9,273,596,000. And further resolved that the City Council of the City of West Haven authorizes an additional revision to the fiscal year 2025 budget as follows. Increase account number 19500010-54140. AFD pension expense by 231,569,000 or final closeout figure as an addition, addition contribution to the pension fund. And I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding approval of fiscal year 2425 budget revision to increase the AFD budget and to make an additional expenditure appropriation to the AFD pension. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Does Attorney Dorsey get paid by the word?
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? And one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 14th day of October to consider the matter of Communication F requesting City Council approval to create a new capital budget project titled Communications and Technology Upgrades in the amount of 253, wait a second, I'm sorry, $253,100 for the Malloy site where funding is available by reclassifying, transferring previously approved and bonded projects for the police phone system upgrade, $100,000 and police technology balance of $153,100. It is the unanimous opinion of the, of the committee that the following motion be presented. Whereas the City of West Haven desires to upgrade the communication and technology systems at the Malloy site. And whereas it has been determined by the Finance Director that the new capital improvement project can be established within the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 budget to accomplish this upgrade through the reallocation of capital project funds as it allows. Police technology, $153,100 from the 2022 to 2023 capital budget. Police phone system upgrade, $100,000 from the 2021 to 2022 capital budget. Total reallocation is $253,100. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of West Haven by and through its Finance Director is authorized to create a capital improvement project within the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 budget to upgrade the communication and technology systems at the Malloy site. And be it further resolved that the City of West Haven by and through its Finance Director is authorized to reallocate capital improvement funds to the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 budget from accounts set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto in the amount of $253,100 to fund said upgrades. And I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding City Council approval to create a new capital project titled Communications and Technology Upgrades. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Motion carries.
I apologize, I can't read my numbers tonight. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 14th day of October to consider the matter of Communication H regarding the approval to waiver all permitting fees for the Halloween on the Green event for 2025. It is the unanimous opinion that the following motion, it is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the waiver of all permitting fees for the Halloween on the Green event for 2025. And I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding a waiver of permit fees for Halloween on the Green 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. That concludes the business for Finance.
Thank you. Moving to Councilman, Chairman Vargo, Legislative Matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Council, uh, the Committee on Legislative Matters, uh, met this evening on Communication B from Mayor Durinda Bora regarding an amendment to Chapter 206 Streets and Sidewalks adopting Article 8 Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices. And I will read a, uh, first read of the summary. Pursuant to the authority granted by Connecticut General Statute 14-307C, the proposed ordinance would amend Chapter 206 of the Code of the City of West Haven to add Article 8 Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices hereinafter known as ATESDs. The proposed ordinance would provide for the placement of ATESDs in school zones, pedestrian safety zones and other places designed, designated high-risk zones by the Board of Police Commissioners after public hearings and approved by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. It allows fines in the amount of $50 for a first offense and $75 for subsequent offenses within one year solely upon individuals detected by such devices in such zones to be, one, traveling above 10 miles per hour over the posted speed limit or two, failing to stop at a solid red light on a traffic control signal. It also allows the city to enter into agreements with vendors for the design, installation, operation and maintenance of ATESDs, provide for hearings for any individual that has been issued a citation for violation of this ordinance in accordance with the procedures delineated in Connecticut General Statute 7-152C, including appeals to the Superior Court. It provides defenses for the operation of emergency vehicles, inoperative or uncalibrated devices, violations that are necessary, uh, for the operator to comply with an order or direction from law enforcement officer, violations that are necessary to allow the passage of an authorized emergency vehicle and violations that take place during a period of time in which the motor vehicle had been reported as being stolen to a law enforcement unit. It also, uh, limits the use of information gathered by such devices solely to that of evidence of violations of the offenses created by this ordinance. And I am requesting a public hearing on October 27th at 6:55.
Okay, so noted. And we will have it at 6:55 on October 27th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your Committee on Legislative Matters met to consider the matter of Communication D from the September 22nd, 2025 Agenda from Michael Gorman, Director of Finance regarding an ordinance amendment updating Chapter 42, Section 6 Competitive Bidding of the City of West Haven ordinances to be in conformity with the State of Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-148V, requirements for competitive bidding. It is, it is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the ordinance be approved as written. And I will read, uh, the summary for the second time. Commencing fiscal year 2526, the proposed amendment, amended ordinance will change the estimated cost threshold at which a supply or contractual service shall be purchased or awarded by formal written contract from the lowest responsible bidder from $10,000 to that amount enumerated in Section 7-148V of the Connecticut General Statutes, which is currently $35,000. And I move that we adopt the ordinance as drafted.
I have a motion to approve a matter regarding an ordinance amendment updating Chapter 42, Section 6 competitive bidding for the City of West Haven, for the City of West Haven ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, your Committee on Legislative Matters met to consider the matter of Communication I from the July 28, 2025 Agenda from Mayor Durinda Bora regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the Code of the City of West Haven, Fair Rent Commission. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the ordinance, uh, be approved as drafted. And I will perform the second reading of the summary. The amended ordinance will allow an alternate member of the Fair Rent Commission to vote in the absence of a regular member, authorizes the commission to report offenses to other appropriate city department, departments, including the police department, allows the consideration of the frequency of rent increases and landlord improvements to the rental property, clarifies commission voting procedures and the existence of a quorum, and sets a time schedule for the commission to conduct hearings and issue decisions on complaints. Mr. Chairman, I move that the ordinance be, uh, adopted as drafted.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the Code of West Haven Fair Rent Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
That concludes the business of the Legislative Matters Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic. That moves us on to council liaison reports. Any council liaison reports? Okay, uh, moving on to new business. Um, I am afraid the mayor, I kicked the mayor out after a 14-plus hour day. She needed some rest. So unfortunately, we do not get anything from her today. Does anybody else have any new business for us? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you once again, everyone, and have a good night.